All right. Hello and welcome to the Community Engagement Subcommittee Meeting for the Greenfield Public Schools. It is Monday, August 25th, 2025. It's 6:00 PM. Thank you. We are handing agendas around. This meeting is being recorded. If any other person present are also recording, you must notify the chairperson of the subcommittee at this time. Is anyone else recording? Nope? All right. Let us do roll call. Member Goodwin?
Here.
I am here. Vice Chair Sexton.
Here.
And also present is Superintendent Joel, and we have a quorum. All right. Next up is public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to make public comment?
I will. I don't know if you need me to move closer to some mic somewhere.
I think it will be okay. I just have to set up the timer. But you can come closer if you wish, of course.
I just remember Glenn had me muted over there one time, but that was because it was a mic somewhere.
I don't, I mean, be closer to this.
Maneuver this in your direction.
Oh, good.
Just enunciate.
Am I there? Yes, hello.
All right, so Pamela Goodwin?
Yes.
Okay, three minutes. Please state your name and where you live.
Yep, I'm Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street here in Greenfield. And I've been attending the school committee meetings for a number of months now. I recently did attend also a subcommittee that was chaired by Member Martini. If I'm remembering right, one of the meetings, it was suggested that Member Sexton via liaison to the city council, and I think that that was not moved forward for a vote. And when I look at the agenda, it says, "Develop goals for a joint meeting, the City Council Community Relations Subcommittee on September 15th, 2025." I am just wondering, since most everybody in the city knows there was a lot of confusion, a lot of chaos, a lot of change going over. And one of the reasons why interim Superintendent Joel was chosen was to kind of settle everybody down. He had a lot of experience in other places and also experienced here in the city of Greenfield. So I don't have any objection necessarily for somebody who's trying to represent the school committee to city council. However, unless I'm mistaken, there's the school committee, and then there's the city business. And except for like a budget season where the school committee and the superintendent have to come before ways and means, for example, to talk about a budget, that happens first. And I know that we always have the superintendent come to city council every month. So we have the mayor come on a steady basis. She presents her program, has an agenda, questions are asked by the city council. The same kind of thing can also happen. That's why we have the superintendent there each month, where something is presented from the school's viewpoint, and then city councillors ask questions of the superintendent. So I'm not real clear, but I thought that there was some kind of a division in the charter separating school business from city business, except in various circumstances. I also talked to the city clerk today, who explained that if a member of the school committee wanted to sit next to the superintendent, that's always a possibility, much like the mayor can invite anybody up to her if she wants assistance. Same thing with the superintendent is what I was under the impression. And since we have a lot of changes going on, I'm just wondering. You know, those are my thoughts, and I can hear the timer. So thanks for letting me make a public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We have some other members of the public who've joined us, or let me see if if you'd like to make public comment. Now is your time. Tommy Lee, would you like to unmute and make public comment? Going once. Going twice. You can let us know in the chat if you change your mind. Okay, all right. Moving along to the next part of the agenda is the approval of the June 17th, 2025 Subcommittee Minutes. Does everybody need a minute to look at it? Have you looked at it?
I have another minute. I usually count on
Take a minute.
Member Childs as an editor.
Yes, take a moment, and then we'll do our motion. Everybody ready? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 17th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So Member Sexton made the motion, and second from Goodwin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda. Developing goals for a joint meeting with City Council Community Relations Subcommittee on September 15th, 2025. So I guess I'll give a little bit of background to that. So one of the things that we had talked about is making some good relationships with our sister subcommittees that do similar things. And on the city side, there is the Community Relations Subcommittee. We'll be receiving an invitation from them shortly to join them at that meeting. And the main goal is to see if there are any overlapping interests for our constituents, both on the school side and the city side, and how we could better serve everyone by working together in that capacity. So one of the things that we need to really plan is what we're going to talk about at that meeting. So I think in order to do that, and whenever we've had these meetings in the past, we've voted to suspend Robert's Rules of Order so that we can just have a loose working session, since that seems to work better for our subcommittee. So can I have a motion to suspend Robert's rules for the rest of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Yeah, cool. All right. So we don't need to do that anymore. Until the end. So we are meeting with them for the first time. In fact, I think this is the first time that we've ever had a school-city joint meeting or been invited to one, and we have invited for this subcommittee, and we've invited city councillors in the past to join the budget and finance. And in all of the classes that we have taken in Hyannis and in all of the professional development, we have always learned how important it is that we create relationships with the city side and attend each other's meetings and potentially have meetings together. So as far as we could tell, that is not in violation of the charter in any way. So we'll be meeting on September 15th, and
So can I ask some questions?
Of course, yes. It's time. This is the time. The time is to ask questions and find out what we're going to talk about.
Okay. So I guess, so they invited all of the school committee, or just some of the school committee?
Just us. It is a meeting between two, we're being invited as a subcommittee.
Who's the chair of their subcommittee?
Laura Wandelowski.
Because I've never heard of this subcommittee at city council, and I'm pretty faithful about watching them. Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, so it's Laura Wandelowski, and they're excited to invite us and see how we can work together. Now, if it was a joint meeting between the larger school committee, we would obviously need to vote on having that.
Right. That's what, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. What, so before we talk about what we want to talk about, what is, they invited us, is what you're saying to me. So what are their goals for the meeting?
We don't know yet. We have not received the invite with the information yet.
The sense that I'm getting is that we just have, we have these two bodies now, the school committee and the city council, that have these two subcommittees that have very similar names, and I think we're curious about each other. What do you do? What are you about? What's your purpose?
Meet and greet.
Yeah, it's kind of like, are our purposes overlapping? Do we try to do the similar things? And, you know, obviously, we're going to have a more specialized purpose, but like, is the intention for them, I don't know, to get more people at city council meetings? Is their intention to see how our public events are being received? I don't know. Is that what their purview or charter is? I'm curious about these things. These are the kinds of things that I want to have happen at this meeting, and just tell us what you do, what your point is. Do we have similar points? Can we host any joint, like, events together or something?
So, you know, I walked into my first classroom in 1983, so I'm old. So I gave a lot of, you know, a lot of thought to politics in schools over the years. And my concern always is that schools stay, politics stay out of schools. And I can tell you personal stories. My dad was in Vietnam twice, and my sister was told by a teacher that my dad was a murderer because he was in Vietnam. I can tell you during 9/11, we had problems too, because politics came into our schools. And I had parents who were bringing back people from Afghanistan who worked, their kids were in my school. So politics in schools to me, schools are nonpartisan. You know, this town is like, I don't even know what it means anymore, left, right, progressive, all of that. To me, the school committee represents people who stand for children, not really a political stand. I see the city council, see, I see them different, so that's why I wanted to say this, is the city council is the politics of the city. I really feel that. I mean, when I listen to them, it's like, oh yeah, we're over here and they're over there, and it's politics. But with the school committee, and I've sat through decades of school committees, meetings in different places, it's really supposed to be, in my heart, nonpartisan. You know, for years, it was the band parents and the sports parents and retired educators who were on school committees, who were just trying to make sure good things happen for kids. And I think we're all people who want good things to happen for kids, but I just really strongly feel that there is a big difference between the two. And as a Greenfield person who has watched all of the Greenfield School Committee meetings and ironing my clothes on Sundays for UMass class, I started like 1996, I've been watching school committee, they've stayed out of the politics. And so I really, and then when we get to budget time, it's always like, oh, the mayor cut the budget. I mean, it becomes a political sort of game, and I don't want it to be that. I want it to be everybody, and I believe that our city council is pro-kids, and we're pro-kids. But another election could be totally different. I just am concerned, I guess.
So I think that one of the things to understand is that if you have never seen Greenfield interact with their city side, if you've never seen the schools interact with their city side, that's not right. Like, that's not how that's supposed to be. And there's a lot of things that Greenfield has never done that are best practices. And we're taught that having open lines of communication between them, it's not a partisan issue. It's that we're trying to do the best possible job for the citizens. And by making relationships and meeting and getting an idea of what they're working on and what is coming down the pike, budget-wise or whatever, that helps us to make a smooth experience for the citizens and to give them the best that we possibly can. So it's not a partisan issue, and there's not politics involved, and no one's going to discuss politics. But if, for example, they're hearing something from their constituents that they need to improve upon something, and it's the same thing that we need to improve upon, we could do that together. And that's joint resources, and that's really how it's supposed to go. And when we talk about hiring a budget person or a volunteer coordinator, one of the things that we're taught is, have you talked to the city side? Do they also have that? Can you share resources? Can you talk to that person? It's not about mixing things and/or creating conflict. It's the opposite. So that's, I mean, that's my goal. I'm not going into anything desiring political strife. And the fact that they're so separate is not necessarily how it's supposed to be. Do you have comments, Stacy? I have a turn so that you can be sure.
Recorded. Sure. For posterity's sake. I mean, I can, I totally agree that our schools are for educating all of our students, regardless of anything, regardless of what their parents think or believe or any of that. Our schools are for educating all of our students. And the history of education is inherently political in this country, and everywhere, all countries, but in this country in particular. And so I can, my philosophy is not that education is totally nonpartisan, because we look at the games they're playing federally with our schools now. It's very clear, politics are already there whether we want them to be or not. Now, I also, I disagree that our city council is the politics of Greenfield. They're supposed to be administrative, and that is their function, that they administrate the budgets. They, they're supposed to, that's, that's part of what they're about, is making sure that we have sound policy and fiscal, like, that's why they have the ways and means, that's why they control that. That's why they are forward-looking and thinking about, you know, whatever. But, you know, I'm not a city councillor, so I don't have the total ins and outs of all that they do. That being said, I think though, having this relationship with another subcommittee, like I said, it's not, we're not going before the full 13-member body and trying to develop independently, us three, a relationship with all of that. We're saying, all right, you've got this group, ostensibly your purpose is to make yourselves more accessible to the public. We also have a goal of making ourselves more accessible to the public as a group. I want to know, do they have any strategies that have been more successful than what we've done? Maybe. I don't know. What strategies have they tried? That's a good question. And so for me, it's about, again, a fact-finding mission, if you will. What do you do? Why do you do it? How do you do it? Have you learned anything about how we can do this better together? I also think that it's important for our, like, we do operate separately. We are fiscally independent, like, we are a subset. We have our own oversight. And our schools are the biggest economic driver of our city. Yeah. And if we, like, our long-term goals, our five, 10-year plan should be in line with the city's five, 10-year plan.
That's right.
Not saying that they are lockstep, but saying that they have a relationship with one another. And to hamstring our ability to have that relationship at the lowest level possible, like, closest to the actual people in the town, you know what I mean? We don't need to have it all live up here. It can be us having conversations, saying, what do we want for our kids? What do we want for our town, our city, policies? You know, and how can those two things be mutually?
A town who turns from the city by a boat. And it was in the misguided mode.
Well, whichever way.
But it's like, you know, how can, how can what we do and what they do work like clock gears so that we're smooth functioning?
It's sort of the same reason why Ann goes to the city planning. You know, we have to know, because we're part of that. We have buildings in the city. Yeah. It's sort of the same, it's, you know, we do a lot of overlap that we don't even know about. Like, our school, our summer eats.
Resources are we?
Our summer eats goes to Four Rivers, too. Like, we have, we pay for some professional development to Stoney Burnham teachers. Like, we do all of these cross things, like, there's no reason why we shouldn't, you know, explore all of those pathways and understand them. There might be a path for us. There might not.
And is there a way that we can do things more efficiently?
I mean, I hear you. I understand you.
Yeah.
I'm not dictating. I'm saying, I'm
I don't.
I want you to feel super comfy about this.
Because I really have strong feelings about it. You know, the people who want to ban books in your schools, the people who come in front of school committees who don't want us to teach evolution. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a history of politics trying to run what we do in our schools. Massachusetts has been pretty good at, like, back off.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that our schools stay as good as they are and get even better without somebody deciding we're not going to read some book in the library, or somebody to say, we're not going to teach evolution in biology, because there's a political agenda behind it. And I think the world is kind of crazy right now, full of political agendas that are scary. And well-meaning people bump into it all the time, and that just worries me. As somebody who's had to stand firm against it. Everything from history didn't really happen to, we're not going to teach history anymore. I mean, I had to deal with that in this city as a principal. So part of what I'm saying to you is, it's just, and then the longest-serving person, I think, on city council who's been on city council multiple times, I think, is the mayor. I guess if we're going to do this, I would like her to be present for this joint meeting, because she has the longest history on city council.
Well, we can't do that, because then it would be a quorum.
For us.
For us, yeah.
Four of us.
We can't have four. That's against the law. So, but we can have our subcommittee meet. And I think, I think if we spend a little time, we can find all kinds of examples of wave our arms of of this happening.
One penny at a time. That's right.
We can find a lot of examples of this happening in other districts, and we've heard of that. I mean, I've met many other school committees who are like, oh yeah, we meet all the time, and we know. Do you have examples of that? Have you encountered that, Superintendent?
No, but I've seen in Chickaby, for example, they would send a school committee representative to city council meetings, more as an observer. Obviously, they can't vote at that time, and not even every time, reporting out.
That's interesting.
Liaisons, a liaison, become more active generally during budget times. Or, you know, school building projects, something big that's really going on, but general meetings, they would really just be there observing.
But for, on the subcommittee level?
Yeah, not too many subcommittees, no.
Oh, okay. We have a lot of subcommittees, I think. As a body, we've chosen to do that, which we have many, more than most, but, okay. So it sounds like what I'm hearing from the two of you is that this meeting would be a chance to see what they're about. It's exploratory. We're going to see if there's overlap, and we seem to be in agreement with that. We're not proposing anything. We're just on a meet and greet.
A meet and greet. I'm okay with this.
Yeah.
I'm not, I just want to know what they're looking for and have a conversation. And I'm always good with conversation, because we do run into the same thing. I mean
Yeah, I think that that's a good point, and I think that a conversation is enough, really, to get started. And we might find that we have things that are aligned, and we might find that we do not, but it's worth the conversation. And I think that, to your point about staying really strong against things that we don't believe in, knowing the people who could bring that forward and having them know you is valuable and will help to have those things not happen. Because there have been many years where we don't even know the city councillors. Like, there are city councillors I have not even met, who have not met me. And I think that's kind of, I have personal feelings about that, but I think it's better if we all know each other.
I think that's good that you shared that, because I think that's, that would be like a social thing that should happen.
I've been advocating for city municipal barbecue for like ever.
Oh, yeah. We've been talking about these things a long time.
The mayor would love that. Did you tell him?
Barbecue and bocce dog.
Stacy's great idea.
Ribbit, man.
Okay, so do we feel good for that we're doing?
Yes. I'm okay with that.
And just
And let's plan like
We tell them what we do, they tell us what they do.
And we see if there's overlap for constituents. There may or may not be, but I have a feeling it's going to be about number five on the agenda. That's what it's going to be. Discussion of merging district event calendars into one combined calendar, identifying if the Greenfield Public School Information Technology Department can merge all district electronic event calendars into one. I think she placed a link, but that's, that's
Not the same?
No.
Okay, she's not a tech person, but she tries.
So the background from this is that we've talked in the past about how we struggle as a school committee, knowing what the schools are up to and where the events are, so that we can support and be present. And we started trying to make a calendar and realized that that's not really a good use of our time. It's to be plugging things into a spreadsheet. We got busy. It all fell apart. So the thought process is, is there a way to make it so that there's one calendar that we can subscribe, like the one calendar to rule them all, where we can see what's up at the schools, and also something that parents can subscribe to? Because we had an email that I said that I would reference in regards to this that came just the other day, and it's not really materials, but it's just a constituent thought about how they were getting ready to come to tonight's meet and greet. And they didn't get the emails that they felt that they needed to get. And I've heard this now from like a dozen people. And missing emails, missing supply lists, missing things like that. So while that's not our purview, because that is our job, we'd like to see if there's a way that we can have something that encompasses that and what we need to support on our level. And in the pie-in-the-sky dream that also involves like city events and how it all collects together, see how I'm going with the maybe we can
I'm, yeah.
So
And past superintendents, just so you know, it dried. Jordana was big into this, and it really is an issue of different technology at the schools that is different at the district level. So like, so that's why Samore was born, okay? Jake Toomey founded, he and I paid for it ourselves. We were like communicating with parents on the sly on Samore, because it was easy for us to use. And then everybody adopted it. So Right. So what would happen at the school level is, we were trying to put it on the district website, but then a secretary would be chosen to do that, and then the secretary kept changing, and then the principals would forget to tell. So the secretary changed thing in the schools and at the district level. And so then it just sort of became, whose job is it? And the schools keep sending out whatever, you know? I mean, Samore became the user thing that we used, but there wasn't a central, there is a central calendar on our website.
Yeah, so I was going to ask you, if I may.
Yeah, of course, yes.
This calendar that's there. Are you looking to have all the schools have everything there, or are you looking more conceptually like Google Calendar-ish, where you can have, now you can click on Google Calendar and add to your own calendar, and then you can unclick it, it comes off of it, so you don't get confused with all the stuff that's on there?
Maybe.
Were you looking for more like six schools with clicks there? Or if you want everything, like, so for example, on, I'm making this up today, is the 25th, you have everything that's going on in every single school under one date of the 25th.
I guess based on what parents have told me and what teachers have expressed, is that they would like to be able to go in to a central calendar and have everything on there, and then they can click, select, or deselect what they don't want to see. So, yeah, because then they're like, oh, I have one child at Four Corners, and I have one child at the middle school. Those are the calendars I need to look at. But I also want to know when are the school committee meetings, so the subcommittees would be on there. I don't want to go to everything, but maybe I want to know if there's a school event this week. So it should be something that can be selected and deselected. But it's just, there's also been like a history within our committee, our large committee, that there hasn't, like, there is, there's Google Docs from the past, but nobody can like add people to them or take people off of them, like, nobody, like, somebody left with the password, like, there's permissions. There's permissions issues, you know, that we come up against sometimes. So it's sort of like it's time to centralize all of this information and just have, like, just start to tackle that. And we don't know how extensive that is, okay? But let me give Stacy a chance, because they have not spoken on this.
Yeah, I was just going to sort of answer your question a little bit. It is kind of, it's a call of the expectation, where people do want to be able to add calendars to their phone or something like that. And we want there to be this one place where everything is listed. Every single thing that is happening with a school on any given date. That way, there's one place you can go. But it would be helpful, as Elizabeth was saying, if there's a function somewhere on our calendar. if there's a function somewhere on our, on our calendar where they can select or deselect a particular school.
Right, cause as I mentioned, Ian Edwards, our integration technology director and I, we talked about this in preparation for this meeting. He believes that there is definitely something we could do. We would have to probably, might take not a ton of work, but where you'd have to have each school put in, whether it be a Google or something like that. And then he would collaborate, because this is not what we're looking at right here, that type of scenario.
Yeah.
But we could draw, I could draw up some proposals with him.
Yeah. And I'm, I, I'm wondering, I don't know what the functionality of Samore is, but if that is a platform that all of our schools.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Newsletterish.
It's a newsletter, but they posted it in there. Can you scrape that? Does it feed into a calendar? I don't know what the, what the function is, so, but that could be an easy one source to draw from.
He and I did meet the other day and last week in preparation again for this. I think there's something we can do.
Sweet.
You know, we were really, unfortunately, we were not gonna be able to get it done by tonight.
Oh, no, we didn't expect, we didn't expect that. It was more of a conversation.
I wanted to hear more from you and he's out helping some of the schools right now. But then, you know, he and I'll catch up this week. It'll slow down after, I say after tomorrow. It's more still professional development, but then it'll.
We're not in, it's not a like a must happen right now thing because let me tell you, I've been asking for it now for, this is the fourth year I've been asking for something like this. I have been asking and asking and asking and I've always been told that it's just, it's too big of an, of an elephant to tackle. So if you, if you can find a way.
Even, even individual schools' calendars sometimes get very big. For example, pick the high school, right? A lot of activity there, just the regular going on events. But then all of a sudden decide to throw in a sports calendar on there. Holy smokes, right? Every week, um, two field hockey games, two soccer games, two boys' games, two girls' games, a football game, right? All of a sudden, that can take up almost your whole calendar. Then throw in some student council meetings and throw in rehearsals. So things were definitely for people, like you said, to click on or click off otherwise. We'd have, we'd have one day and it's gonna be like, people are gonna be like, I'm gonna do much.
People need to have the experience of visualizing that so they know what.
Yeah, and then, you know, the people who are very particular about, I need to know about all the sports can know. And then they won't miss things. They, you know, then people can't say, I didn't know that there was a thing.
Right, without having to go to Arbiter, which is a whole separate website.
Right, you know, and there are people who just want drama or whatever. So yeah, the select and deselect. Okay. Melody, who are you?
So there were three programs that parents were signed into. One is Power School. So I don't know if they make, they make an app maybe for a calendar. I don't know. You've got Samore, which, which all the secretaries enter all of that information in by hand. And we add the new kids. And what's great about Samore is all the languages are there. All they have to do is click on. So people from Cambodia, Haitian, Haitian families can all get it in the language they like and respond to it. And what would be great is if it could send to a parent like alerts, like, you know, softball game tomorrow or something like that. And then I'm trying to remember the name of the one that's a robocall.
Um, that's part of, yes, the.
I don't know if, yeah.
I know what you're talking about, like the messaging service.
Right, whether they can also, um, because that's, those are the three programs. All the emails and phone numbers are in. So if there's a way to connect to that, that would be the.
And robocall is something that I always experienced as a parent and I was very surprised to see that it's hardly ever used here. And it would be really useful. I know, and I've, I told all the superintendents this, but as a parent, I, in LAUSD, you would get a robocall on Monday from your principal or on Sunday. And they would say like, guess what's happened in this week? And they would give a rundown and then it would be like, press two if you need this in Spanish or three. Or whatever. And you had, it could go to your voicemail if you didn't have the time to take this call. And you'd get the information if, and that was great if you couldn't get on the website or if sometimes it wasn't up to date on the website. And so it sort of filled in these gaps. Um, but that's not something that previous superintendents have been interested in. So I'm making my pitch again for the importance of robocalls for major events, not necessarily the daily events, but like, hey, we have a, we've got a play happening on Saturday. This is the big middle school play. We're raising money for whatever. Or we have the big game on Sunday come out, you know? Those things are really important and they make people feel connected and like they're a part of it because they've had the invite.
Yeah, I can tell you from experience and that's not that I'm trying to defend about your former superintendents. But in Massachusetts, the companies themselves, whether it's Power School or different companies who control the robocalls and that, and I don't mean control. They're, we purchase them from, really train a lot of the principals and superintendents in the, in the world of not overusing them and not losing that effectiveness of when that emergency goes out, that something happens. So I think that's probably why you've seen, like I said, not speaking for them, I would bet that's why you've seen them used for lack of, we'll say, regular things. And then how do we discriminate or discern whether the school play, which happens twice a year? Okay, that's not too often. That's a special event, but what about the field hockey game that happens twice a week? Right now, are we telling everybody about, even though it's, maybe it's a regular field hockey game or is it a big one? Cause we're playing our rivals and whoever our rivals are, whether it's, you know, Frontier or Turner or whomever in whatever sport. At what point then do you start leaving somebody out and then they start calling and saying to, well, he wouldn't do the, the robocall for the student council meeting at night or something like that.
I understand.
Not necessarily defending them, but there's always that fine line. Then people start to tune them out.
Right, and there is no perfect system. There will be people who don't like this calendar that we're trying and there are people who want carrier pigeon. I don't know. Truly. I mean, honestly, there are people who would need a raven.
So.
Or an eagle delivering it.
That's right.
A wave.
And that's the only thing that they will accept. We now deliver by Green Wave. Opt in for Green Wave.
Um, as somebody who's worked here for ten years, one of the bigger problems is we spend a lot of money training a whole group of people, whether it's principals, secretaries or whatever, how to use a program. And then they're gone and we don't train the next group of people. Everything from like how to use the cameras in the schools to how to use Power School, to how to use. Um, Samore is sort of intuitive when somebody does it, but the robocall, uh, as somebody who always has to practice robocall, like, you know, make sure that my voice, right, right? Trying to have a new secretary every, you know, one a year or two a year. And trying to have backup to do that um has been really the hard thing.
So that's both like a, hey, let's improve our staff retention and.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Let's write it down in a handbook. I mean, we, we encountered these things ourselves where all of a sudden I was like, oh, I have to chair a meeting, but nobody has told me how to do that. And how do I turn the zoom on? And how do I even hit the, like, I had to write a how to and we had to put it in the handbook.
Nice.
Because we didn't know how to do it with the thought that in the future, you know, you don't wanna lose that information, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Power schooling is ten thousand dollars a day, full training.
So, okay, so we've made our calendar pitch to you and we, I think, I think the most important thing is just to um, just to see like what you encounter and how you feel about it as you work on it and let us know like how it goes. Like we, we don't have a timeline. We just, this is a. Yes, we will pretend to be parents and try to select and deselect and, yeah, I don't have to pretend.
But the great thing is we have a new tech person because our old tech, sorry, new tech person.
You're right. That's.
I don't know his name.
Oh, I don't know his name. So.
Ian Edwards.
Nice. And so they, they, he, I think he'll have fresh ideas about that.
And what we'll do prior to whenever our next meeting is, as I mentioned, he and I will meet, but also I'm gonna be meeting with the principals in another week or two. So we'll bring that up at their meeting and I'll get their feedback. And we'll have lots of information for you.
So, great. So then the new, so moving on to new business then, do we all feel complete with this?
Have one question, I guess, while we're all here. So we see a three thousand dollar bill for social media from TMS and I guess I'm not clear in what that covers. Cause I look at our website and it's like people have left and their names are still on it. Our staff list isn't updated. I mean, our, like I went through all the, the websites today, just like each schools. I mean, nothing's on there about meet and greet. Nothing's on like their pages that kind of would, like a supply list could be put on this, an elementary school, right? All that information could have been put right there. And so we used to like get phone calls, Becky Tara used to like, now you're gonna need that data. So I guess, eh, I don't know who's doing our, our website anymore. If somebody's in charge of it or we're paying somebody to do that, I don't know.
I don't know about the website, but I know that the social media we learned is under the, the umbrella of the TMS vendor services. And so that's something I think we probably have to talk about at the big meeting.
What does that cover?
Yeah, what are, what are, what are the tasks that actually get accomplished?
Um, because we were given the special, we were given the special project amount. But yeah, at the full meeting, I think that that's probably something that to bring up and discuss. And that's something that we have to, as you know, figure out when we get a new business manager someday.
Someday.
So.
Well, I'll look into answers for that about social media and who does websites.
I think, right? Cause that's a place that everybody's used to going.
It's not, yeah, and it's not so much our purview necessarily here, except maybe the social media. I don't know. It's.
If that is a mechanism to engage with our community, then that is our purview.
Yeah, so we could take that on if we, if we want to take that on as a subcommittee.
I'm a long techy, but.
We could say, so I guess I'm asking, are we saying to the full committee that we would like to take on the social media piece? Is that what we're saying?
As in doing, as in.
No, as in, as in.
We don't wanna do that.
As in investigating and finding out who does it, how much it costs and what alternatives are? Are we saying that? Are we making a recommendation?
But I don't even know what they do. That's the problem, like.
I know what they do. I know, I mean, I know what's going on because I follow all the social media, but.
Yeah, and you know what a social media manager should be.
That's right. And I know that there are options in the city for such things that will not cost us such money.
I mean, I would love to see some of our students get experience.
I would also love that. And GCC does have a social media intern program.
Nice. Saving another penny.
So.
We can rub them together.
Do you, is that, is that something that you guys would like to do under our banner?
I think so, because work community engagement.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm hearing that we should bring.
That so.
In September.
I guess I do want to just be like, let's, let's put some parameters around this a little bit.
Yes.
We're community engagement, but we're not administration. We don't necessarily pick who does that. I think we have a role to play in like what kinds of things do we want to see more on our social media? How do we want to see the engagement happen? I think, and also establishing maybe like, this may be blurring some lines, but establishing, how do we know if our posts are sick? Like, how do we know if our reach is good enough?
Right, if we're even getting engagement.
Like, I wanna know what's the return on investment in the radio spots we've been up to, you know, that we used to do.
I always feel that was amazing.
Well, yeah, but I, but I wanna know, but how do, like, we can believe that, but how do we know?
On our website, like how many people visit?
I don't know. That feels like it's blurring a little bit of.
Okay, so, so is the language, okay, so is the language for September that we would like to, under the banner of our community engagement task, we would like to discuss, we would like to know what our engagement levels are on social media? And what our engagement levels are at the radio spot? And who performs these tasks and how much they cost?
Yeah, again, the cost feels like it's blurring a little.
Right, because the cost is attached to the vendor, but our goal is to decouple that eventually. So I don't know if that's going too far.
I do know.
We know, but.
Yes, but.
You just wanna stay away from.
No, we're just trying to see.
But our subcommittee.
Yes, okay, okay.
Per se in charge of the money ourselves. That's something that we have shared responsibility with, with four other people.
And we don't want to do the social media, but we want.
Do the social media, but I am curious.
It is community engagement.
What social media posts are out there about the school committee, not like about us, about us from other people.
Right.
What are we sharing about ourselves and the work that we're up to?
We are not sharing anything. I can tell you that one hundred percent because the only person who talks about the Greenfield School Committee online is me.
Because like, you know, I get that we, I'm, I'm assuming and hoping that there is a monthly post when our meetings happen.
Um, I took that on myself in all of the groups when I started and then I got very, very busy and did not do it.
There should be at the very bare minimum on our Facebook page, there should be a link to the.
We don't have a Facebook page.
I thought we had a Facebook page and a LinkedIn.
For the school committee or for the district? Yes, the district has.
School committee being part of the schools, last we checked, um, should be on the school's Facebook page as in like at the very bare minimum when our monthly meetings happen. But also when we're at events.
I don't think that we have.
So, I'm glad you brought up GCTV. You know, GCTV was born out of a grant between Greenfield Public Schools and the city.
See how cool we are and the kinds of programs that we can generate.
So, and they're used to have on GCTV, like the little banners. It was like an ad that said, school committee this day or, and they used to run football games and stuff for parents who didn't make it to the game. They used to do all that and they're not doing that anymore. So that might be a good, because we, we were their startup money. I can say that as a historian of all of that. Michael East Smith, who was one of my superintendents, helped write the grant with uh, GCTV, Chris Collins, actually. So um, that would not be a bad.
No, and I, I would agree with your statement there. In many cities, there, there's a big tie with the schools. And I don't know the tie here, where for example, like you mentioned, the big, whatever, Thanksgiving Day football game, the big softball rival. The play is posted. I mean, I would have people come up to me now, I remember the beginning of the school year and somebody would say to me, oh, I saw you on TV last night. I'm like.
Exactly.
Like, I'm not on TV last night? Like I didn't do an interview, right? And they're like, oh, no, I was watching graduation from May. Right? And, and they saw me in the fall because they were just rerunning it. You know how they do it in the middle of the night or something like that, right?
Yeah.
That type of scenario, so. Is the, is the count very high? Probably not at one in the morning when somebody's watching my graduation. But the fact that it's out there, sometimes people are picking it up and we could, we'll look into our involvement there.
Sixty people watched the recording of our budget and finance committee.
Ooh.
People do.
Okay.
They do.
Go back to it.
Oh, I catch up on everything like later. Um, so, because I don't have time to do.
I used to iron and watch.
Exactly. So, okay, I'm just trying to be cognizant of our time because we have a hard stop coming up. So is it okay to ask you then to maybe do a little informal research of this and see what we can, if there's possibilities there? Yay, wonderful, thank you. Does anyone have any new business to bring forward? Old business that we have not? Okay. New, going once, going twice, new business, old business, okay? All right, then, back to the Roberts. Let us call our adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Awesome. Um, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
All right, so we are adjourned at six fifty PM. Thank you all for coming.
Do you have a time on the fifteen for that meeting?
Um, I do not yet have a time and.
Likely be at six or six thirty.
And all of our meetings, just so we are all in concert, are now on the fourth Monday of the month. And they will be back in the library. They were just in a different place today because of the meet and greet. All right.
Yeah, I get it. Now you can run upstairs.
Yeah, this will wrap up.